Plugging abandoned wells.
I'll move it.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
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 An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the, uh, in coming out of, uh, Polk County Board of Health.
So move.
Second, or roll call.
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Okay, we have a few minutes, um, to start our regular meeting. I suppose I gotta wait.
You do.
Well, hang tight.
It's, uh...
Okay, we're gonna start again. Okay, good morning. Roll call.
McCoy?
Here.
Brownell?
Here.
Hockins Smith?
Here.
An ort?
Here.
Conley?
Here. Action on the minutes of the previous meeting.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Are there any special claims?
None.
Action on the bill is submitted by the county auditor. Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Uh, yes. This morning, I have a proclamation I'd like to read as a recognition of May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month, whereas mental health is part of an overall holistic health, and whereas nearly one in five adults and one in five adolescents in the United States live with a mental illness, and whereas mental health impacts a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and over well-being with significant disparities among racially and ethnically diverse communities, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause of death among young adults. And 90% of people who die by suicide have an underlying mental illness, and whereas 1/3 of the United States population lives in a county designated as a mental health professional shortage area, and whereas an estimated 44% of residents detained in jails are suffering from a mental illness, often with co-occurring substance abuse disorders. And whereas Polk County, Iowa, and all counties serve as a safety net for residents in need, and where Polk County, Iowa, has developed community-based services and supports along with an array of crisis services, which help people stay out of jail and hospital by offering mental health treatment in the community, and where an important part of education and community erasing stigma is raising awareness around the fact that mental health services are inclusive of other services besides a therapist or a medication prescriber. Mental health services include services and supports that help individuals with mental illness recovery holistically, inclusive of their social, vocational, and community contributions, and therefore be it proclaimed that Polk County Board of Supervisors declares the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Polk County, Iowa, to highlight the critical role of the county in providing crucial mental health services and resources to its residents, and where it be further proclaimed that Polk County Board of Supervisors continues its commitment to partner with community organizations to ensure that all behavioral health and disability services are accessible, valuable, and culturally appropriate for all residents in Polk County, Iowa, approved the 7th day of May. And I also just wanna add that I, I wanna congratulate the board for, I mean, I think we've been tremendous advocates on mental health and, um, everybody really in Polk County, particularly Polk County Behavioral Health. I know it's always forefront in everything that we do. Um, next year, we have a, uh, a roadblock, I'd like to say, because I'm not sure exactly how it's all gonna turn out. I know Annie thinks it's gonna turn out great, and I hope it does what the state is proposing for us, um, next year, uh, when it comes to mental health, but I, I know in the forefront it will be, uh, hopefully whatever is best for our constituents. We've always taken care of them the best way we can. It's a big part of our budget, and now, um, I hope it will continue to always be in the forefront. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, things that we have out there to help people with mental health issues. We have a, our new life center that's gonna open hopefully this fall that will help. Um, we've got a lot of programs out there. We've got a lot of great providers, so if you need help, please call and try to get help in any way that you can. So, thanks Ford for always supporting folks with mental health disabilities. Okay. Public hearing.
Number six, resolution to consider plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs for the 2023 sanitary sewer improvement project.
Is there proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Is anyone here to speak? In favor, anyone to speak? For or against? Anyone's... Okay, seeing none, ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Second is a zoning map amendment, public hearing. Is there proof of publication on file for this?
Yes.
This is a resolution approving Polk County 25, 2050 Comprehensive Land Plan Use Map Amendment from agricultural to the estate residential classification property at 3630 Northeast 150th Avenue, Cambridge, Iowa, MetroTurf. I know I asked, but I gotta ask again. Anyone here to speak? Is there anyone here to speak?
Angela, there's a...
I do have someone.
Okay. There's a little bit different, uh, perspective on this. I, I know we don't get to start, start here, but might be good to hear your perspective on this before, before we listen to, uh, the various residents. So, the staff can come up and talk about this. We've had, had some time to talk about this a little bit, and I have a little perspective on this now, so the staff wanna come up and talk about this a little bit. Maybe they'll change people's delivery, I guess, I mean, I'm thinking.
Sure. Thank you. Good morning. Brian McDonough, Public Works. So, um, with Supervisor Brownell, if, if there's a desire for the board to just rezone the southern portion of the property that aligns with the current comprehensive plan, um, then you would not need to take action on number seven, which is the resolution to amend the comprehensive plan, and then on the rezoning ordinance piece, number eight, um, you could just clarify that instead of the entire property, you'd just be taking action to actually rezone lesser than what's being requested, which would just be the sa- south portion of the property.
Right.
That aligns with the current comprehensive.
The current zoning, I think.
Correct. And then what staff can do, if, if that's the direction the board wants to take, we can make sure that during the future subdivision plat process, that that part to the north that remains ag is basically designated as what we call an outlot, which means it would be unbuildable and have to remain as, as agricultural use. Yeah.
Hey, I'm looking at the map right now. Uh, does somebody else wanna come up and speak? Come on up. State your name and address for the record, if you would.
Uh, my name's Lee McAtee. I live at, uh, 3950 Northeast 150th Avenue, and I have land that adjoins the, the, uh, current property. Um, I come in here just to speak in opposition to this planned, uh, um, re- rezoning. Um, just a few things. I think when we moved here, you know, 10, uh, 13 years ago, actually, uh, when we kinda looked at the northern Polk County area we wanted to live in, uh, we saw that, you know, that was about five miles from Elkhart and Cambridge, 10 miles from Ankeny, 10, 20 miles from actually Des Moines and, and, uh, for, uh, Ames, and we just really thought this is probably an area that's probably not ever gonna get subdivided, see subdivisions and strip malls, you know, in, in the future. So we thought pretty, pretty safe living in that area that that wouldn't happen. I'll just tell you, from, from living there for 13 years, uh, you know, the roads, we have no shoulders, no sidewalks, of course. Uh, it's very rural. Um, we, uh, the, the services there, electricity, water can be an issue, I think. Uh, we certainly, we were the very last people in Polk County to get service, uh, electrical service after the derecho, um, and we still tend to deal with a little bit of service issues there as well. Um, and then water, I, I think, you know, there's some potential water problems, uh, on that property and adjacent properties with not only service, but also runoff. Um, remaining water taps, I, I understand are only five to six water taps left on that water line. We already have low water pressure. So, I come here just to oppose, oppose this as, as a adjoining landowner, and, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak for or against? State your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, I'm Luanne Johnner. I live at 3930 Northeast 150th. So, again, I live right next to the property and, um, come to oppose the development due to the same reasons that Lee spoke of. So, basically, the utility problems that we have in the area, the water, the limited water with, um, Des Moines Water Works, um, and also just the aspect of our community there. Um, I know there's a lot of growth in Polk County, and I know it's coming north, um, but in the White Oak area, like he said, um, when we had our bridges closed due to the construction on 35, we had a lot more traffic in that area. We saw a lot more accidents just because of the type of roads that we have in our area. So, I would just, um, ask that Polk County keep that area more rural as it states in the 2050 plan, um, instead of expanding, um, and allowing more development in that area. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah. Brian? What, what does, I, I know Bob, um, had talked to the owners, or what does this solve by cutting these in half?
Well, the applicant wants to put in, uh, real, um, residential estate, which, you know, three acre lots. Uh, both the zoning on either side of his property already are residential estates, so it would match up that zoning, would not require a comprehensive plan change, and to me, it seems very reasonable. So, that's what I propose we do here.
So, so if this gets rezoned, it will match on either side?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and staff had originally recommended to rezone the entire property. It's not good practice to kinda split zone a parcel. I think the compromise, though, if this is the route the board wants to go, is we can, through that super, uh, future subdivision process, make sure that the ag part is on its own parcel that's basically unbuildable. And then it would still match the comprehensive plan to the south and allow the, the property owner to do, I think, four or five lots maximum because of the water restrictions.
So, they would still get four or five buildable lots?
Correct. With matching the current comprehensive plan. So, if that's, again, if that's the route you wanna go, you would not need to take action on number seven, and then on number eight, just be clarifying that it's the, just rezoning the south portion of the property.
Got it. Did you have a question, Matt?
No, and that you asked if, if they would still be allowed those five frontage lots that they had plotted or laid out as, as part of the...
Correct.
...proposal, so, yeah.
And you, and you guys, and the zoning commission and, uh, staff recommended approval for this?
Staff recommended approval. The zoning commission got a little hung up on, on just this issue. They were only in support of the south half of the property, not the whole property.
Okay.
The water limitations make that a little unique, because even if the whole thing was rezoned, there's only water for these four or five lots, but if it's more amendable to just rezone that south portion, I, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Like I said, we have that motion or not, but I propose the ordinance, uh, let's figure the change we just talked about.
Got it.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
No.
An ort?
No.
Conley?
Yes. Okay, so, uh, the ordinance of the first reading. Approving the zoning map amendment from ag to the estate residential district for property at 3630 Northeast 150th Avenue.
Hope we can change as we just did.
Right. So, who's going to do that change? I mean, we'll just automatically get that done? With that, a map amendment?
Sorry, what's the question?
On the most, on the first reading of the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
That'll have to be changed.
Correct.
The ordinance?
We can do that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Do we delay the first reading, or do we...
Yeah, I don't know. Do we need to delay that first reading? Okay.
Until you have a formal written amendment.
Amendment, okay.
That way, we know what we're...
So, you wanna do a motion to amend the, to delay?
Yes.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
No.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
I've, I was voting that we delay.
Correct.
Okay.
Supervisor Connick, since we're also doing some bond resolutions today, I think it's important that we clarify for the record that Supervisor Hockins Smith is participating electronically today.
Sorry, I forgot about you over there in the corner.
No problem. Supervisor Hockins Smith, does, does current circumstances make it impossible or impractical for you to appear personally today?
Yes.
Record reflect that Supervisor Hockins Smith is participating electronically.
Thanks, Ralph. Okay, um, we're done with the public hearings. We're right this second. Public comments. Anyone wanna speak to the board? Would anybody like to speak to the board right now? Anybody? Okay, go on to permits.
Number 10, fiscal year 2425, applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits for those listed on the agenda. Number 11, renewal application for Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service area permit for Fleetwood Bar and Grill, 6170 North List, Polk City Drive.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell? Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Resolutions, Becky.
12 through 15 are resolutions authorizing the auditor's office to publish notice of public hearings for May 21st on disposal of county interest in real estate. Number 16, resolution ordering destruction of noxious weeds and other offensive growth and authorizing the auditor's office to publish notice. Number 17, resolution authorizing the auditor, auditor's office to publish notice of public hearing for June 4th regarding rezoning of property located at 1300 Northeast 72nd Avenue. Number 18, resolution approving professional services agreement with Calhoun, Burns, and Associates for design services for replacement of a bridge. Number 19, resolution approving professional services agreement with COF Infrastructure and Environment for roadside inventory services. Number 20, resolution approving cooperative public service agreement with the City of Ankeny for resurfacing. Number 21, resolution setting annual service fee for Polk County's residential recycling program.
I'll move those resolutions collectively.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 22, resolution approving agreement with Families Forward for shelter and services for homeless families. Number 23, resolution approving agreement with primary healthcare for healthcare and supportive services for homeless and near homeless citizens. Number 24, resolution approving agreement with Aging Resources of Central Iowa for funding of nutrition and supportive services. Number 25, resolution approving events lease contract with the Iowa State Fairgrounds for Senior Fest 2024.
I'll move those collectively. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yeah.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 26, resolution approving agreement with the B Junior Company to address lead hazard repairs at 2909 Don Lee Court. 27 and 28 are resolutions approving agreements with Beck Steve Limited to address lead hazard repairs at 2563 Maury Street and 2016 Meek Avenue.
I'll move those resolutions.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 29, resolution approving lease agreement with the City of Grimes to operate a congregant meal site. 29A...
Is a res- yeah.
Resolution authorizing Luther Services in Iowa use of the 1907 Carpenter Avenue parking lot for the Farmer's Market.
I'll move those resolutions.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 30, resolution approving May 2024 manufactured home abatements.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 31, resolution approving position modifications included in the fiscal year 2425 budget. Number 32, resolution modifying positions within community, family, and youth services. Number 33, resolution reclassifying position in the Public Works Department. Number 34, resolution reclassifying positions in the Conservation Department. Number 35, resolution creating positions in the Conservation Department. Number 36, resolution approving pay increase for part-time positions in the Conservation Department.
I'll move those. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
37, 38, and 39 are resolutions approving radio network sharing agreements with the Ankeny Community School District, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and the Marion County Sheriff's Office. Number 40, resolution approving temporary site license with new singular wireless PCS. Number 41, resolution approving agreement with International Deeskalation Association for train-to-trainer deeskalation training.
Resolutions.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hockins Smith?
Yes.
An ort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 42, resolution directing the acceptance of a proposal to underwrite 113 million general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2024A, and approving the form and authorizing execution of a note purchase agreement.
I'll move it. Second.
Right on cue, you come up to the podium.
Deb said she didn't wanna come up. So, I, in, in your book, yeah, it's tab 42 is some updated numbers. Uh, this was as of midday yesterday. Um, and to remind you, uh, in the, in the audience, in our world, we get excited about a tenth of a percent, so keep that in mind. Um, and on this issue, a tenth of a percent would be worth about a million five in terms of interest cost to the airport, so it's a real number. Uh, and so, um, the schedule that I put in front of you has, has the current interest rates that we expect. Uh, we use an index called MMD. Um, you know, the, all the industry uses the same index, has rates that are published daily. Um, and then we, uh, calculate, uh, buyers calculate prices of a bond off of the MMD index, and so there's typically a some spread over the index depending on the credit rating and other factors. Um, and so the current estimate spread over the index ranges from s- uh, six tenths of one percent to five tenths of one percent. So, it's, it's pretty, pretty sta- stable spread, and when you add all of that up, we come up with a bond yield that's about 4.36%. That's shown at the bottom of the, of that chart. As of this morning, that number's more like 4.32, but keep that in mind. Um, so, if you remember when we visited last, I suggested that you would approve a resolution, uh, that would authorize Angela's signature with a not to exceed rate. Um, and so typically, we would take the, where we think rates are, and we would adjust upward a little bit to give room in case the market moves a little bit, or in case the underwriter has a more difficult time selling the bonds than they expect. And so I had suggested that we use not to exceed interest rate of 4.52 on the, on an average. That is about two tenths of a percent above the, where we think the current rates are right now. Does that make sense for everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, in terms of timing, uh, we had planned on trying to sell the issue tomorrow. Uh, we're still working on with, that that is the goal. There is the outside chance that, uh, based on what's happening in the market today, that the underwriter may choose to sell the bonds yet this afternoon, um, in which case we would have it wrapped up by 4:30 or so our time. Um, and, uh, but I've given them kind of the flexibility to go out in the market and talk to their, I don't wanna sound like a dictator, uh, I've given, uh, go out and talk to their clients and get a sense as to where their clients are at, and if they feel like there's adequate appetite, then yeah, we would be prepared to move forward today. If not, we would be prepared to move forward tomorrow. If not, we would be prepared to move forward tomorrow. I will know more of noonish timeframe as to what we're doing, but I just want to make sure you understand, there's a chance we wrap it up yet today, so. Um, so the reso is to authorize the sale and the signature on the purchase agreement with a not to exceed interest rate, and, and in the reso, it's blank, our suggestion would be that that number be four point five two percent, and I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
We're good.
The, uh, stipulation you put on it for the chair of signature, uh, uh, as long as it's below a certain rate, we're, we're within that, that, uh, window right now.
We are, yes. And we've got about two tenths of a, of a, of a market movement adjustment and still be within that window.
Right, thanks.
Yep.
I'll move that.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Thanks, Tim. Uh, Eric, do you need to add anything, or are we good?
Yeah, I need your signatures backwards.
Perfect. Okay.
Forty-three and forty-four are resolutions abating taxes for property at forty-eight forty-five Merle Hay Road and fifteen sixteen Valley West Drive in West Des Moines.
I'll move those.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Forty-five and forty-six are resolutions approving amended agreements with Project Iowa and United Way of Central Iowa for Polk County funding.
I'll move those. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number forty-seven, resolution approving vehicle sale agreement.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Forty-eight and forty-nine are resolutions approving agreements between Polk County on behalf of Central Iowa Local Workforce Development Area and National Able Network and Youth and Shelter Services.
I'll move it. Second. Let me, can I just make a comment on this?
Go for it.
What we're doing. Uh, Polk County is the grantee for Central Iowa Local Workforce Development Area. Money from the U.S. Labor Department flows through us, and then we, we will then pay it out to, uh, the National Able Network and the, uh, Youth and Shelter Services beginning July first. We, we in the past few months have gone out RFP, uh, contracts with Children and Families of Iowa expired, so we're entering into a new contract, and these were the two, uh, organizations for adults and for youth that really fit the numbers and, and fit us, but this is as a result of us being the grantee.
Okay. Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Fifteen fifty-one are resolutions approving community development grants for the Duane Symphony Association and Joppa.
I'll move those. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell? Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number fifty-two, resolution approving community sponsorship awards.
I'll move that. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number fifty-three, resolution approving community betterment grant awards.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Reports, Becky.
Number fifty-four, annual comprehensive financial report fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Uh, receive and file. Are, any budget actions?
None.
We do have some appointments.
I'll move them.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Okay, we are gonna come out of this and do a quick staff meeting.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Hawkins Smith?
Yeah.
Anort?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Okey-dokey. Hey, folks. Andrea. Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Um, this is just a brief overview on some of the, the conversation and the work that's taking place regarding the ERA two funding. Um, as you all know, we received, I think it was sixty-two million dollars from the U.S. Treasury, um, to go towards rental, emergency rental assistance that was, um, administered by Impact Community Action Agency and was paying rent directly for families. Um, the remaining twenty-five percent of that sixty-two million is allowed to be used for the development of more affordable units, and that equals out to be between ten and fifteen million, um, dollars, depending on whether a particular project's gonna be happening or not. So what we've been talking about in terms of spending that money is using it to address, um, homeless families and at-risk for homeless families. We know that the homeless problem in Des Moines is kind of a mushroom cloud right now, and so are taking the approach of narrowing our target audience as much as possible to have a really meaningful and impactful, um, outcome for those folks. Um, some early conversations were about, um, using that fund to supplement Lytech developments that are being planned, and, you know, in conversation with our housing partners, um, we felt like we're not actually getting more units by further supplementing those projects, so wanting to make sure that we are in fact getting more affordable, um, homes into the community. So we've put together a team of a lot of county staff, Public Works, General Services, Health Services, um, uh, CFYS, Health Department, everybody's been at the table along with, um, our community partners and Housing Trust Fund, ANOM, um, Impact, City of Des Moines, uh, Community Foundation, and have really put together, um, a lot of thoughts on how to have, how to most effectively use this money. And what we came down to is, um, using our, access to our tax sale properties and locate, and finding about thirty to sixty vacant lots and building, um, affordable homes. So these will be single-family homes that, that families who are currently in shelter or awaiting shelter, um, will be able to be housed in at an affordable rate. Um, they will be paired up with an appropriate level of supportive services, um, and to make sure that they're able to continue, um, job training, bettering their income, um, all those kinds of things to make sure that they're successful in these homes. Um, so, process-wise, that's kind of the big picture view. Um, we're looking at doing probably forty sites, um, and then also looking at purchasing a couple of multifamily units, like four to eight units that might need some level of rehab and, um, can house larger families as well. Um, so that's kind of the big picture view of, of what we're envisioning doing with this funding. Um, Public Works is taking the lead on procuring the vacant lots, and they're working with the City of Des Moines on a, a house plan that will meet their specifications, and it's really just the thought process is copy and paste. Um, we originally started talking about rehabbing, you know, houses that nobody in, on the market would be interested in, um, but decided that that was kind of a wild card, and every project would be different, and we'd have to adjust and get different contractors, and then by doing kind of the single floor plan already approved by the city, we'd be more efficient both in terms of, um, time and in procuring supplies, since the timeline on spending this money is, um, December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. So Public Works is taking the lead on that. General Services is engaged in helping locate multifamily properties and probably do the rehab portion. Um, Carl's also helping locate, um, properties. Doug Roaming has come on as a contract employee and is putting together just about finalized an RFI that will go out to the community for the service provision piece. So we've got the construction piece, we've got the service provision piece, and then we'll have the property maintenance piece as well. Um, so Doug is just about finalizing the RFI, um, application that will go out for providers to say, yes, I want to be the one who works with these families and gets them, you know, stabilize, better income, um, and in, in safe and affordable housing. Um, we have a meeting scheduled with the Treasury, I believe, next week to go through this at a high level and get some specific questions answered, um, you know, about AMI and what happens if a family does succeed and goes above fifty percent AMI. Can we do any kind of rent-to-own, um, type of, of pro- process with them? So ironing out some of those details as well. Um, but those are the, that's kind of the big picture, um, plan for the funds as of now. We think that it'll be about ten million. We, we had, um, talked about committing five million to the tower project that's happening on the, um, downtown. If that project doesn't come through, then that money will be added to this, this project as well. There's about two and a half million dollars in interest that was earned on the ERA one and ERA two money, and an additional about two and a half million that we can use for administrative purposes, and what we're proposing is putting that in, um, an endowment fund at the Community Foundation that will be used to primarily pay for the supportive services piece, um, any of the maintenance that comes up, and if there's any e- extra expenses from Davis Bacon rules that are, um, that get put on the developers. So, um, we think that there's a route for this all to be self-sufficient for many, many years, and it all kind of came about modeling it after, um, what we've done with the Health Services, Behavioral Health Disability Services group homes, so. Anybody from the group want to add anything? Did I miss any critical detail?
Got a couple of questions, Sarah.
Yeah.
Uh, you used the word we're gonna be developed, I mean, I think you're just using that pronoun as collectively for the community. Who's specifically gonna be developing these properties we're gonna buy?
We will contract with developers, and Public Works has talked to a handful of them that, um, indicated they'd be willing to do it for a flat fee, so we should, we'll know what the expense is upfront, and then it'll just be copy, paste, copy, paste.
Do we have, uh, developers as part of this task force?
No.
Uh, so just so I understand how this is gonna work, okay, here's, here's my issue with this, is that developers come in and they develop a piece of property with residential development of some sort, whether it's a mixed-use or just all market rate, whatever it is, they're looking for, they're gonna build it for X dollars, and they want a certain return on it, whether it's market rate or mixed-use, or whatever it is. So are we talking about subsidizing that margin, or what? Because they're not gonna settle just a flat rate, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't settle a flat rate that's just kind of out there.
No, the conversations that Public Works has had so far is that they are willing to do it for a flat rate. They see the value in turning vacant and blighted lots into, you know, a nice-looking property that blends into the neighborhood and provides affordable housing, so the, correct me if I'm wrong, Brett, but their, their conversations were that, yes, we would be interested in doing this for a flat fee. Obviously, we'll, we're working on what the, the actual cost to build it looks like in terms of supplies, and, and that process, that'll be done through procurement as well, but the developers are interested in being a part of it and just doing it for a flat fee, and then we, Polk County will retain ownership of the house, working with the service provider on the tenant paying rent, doing all kinds of like classes, job training, those kinds of things to make sure.
That's the sticky part.
Yeah.
That we're not crazy about.
One of the sticky parts, I'd say, well, I think this.
One of the sticky parts.
This sounds good, I mean, I, I just, uh, I think the flat fee probably includes the margin, right? I mean, there's no doubt about that, they're not gonna do it for, they're not gonna do it for break-even money. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, so it's, that's good, we've got people interested in this, I guess. Uh, but then we'll move on to the sticky part, I guess, if that is.
Well, I mean, we, we don't really know yet what the design of the house is gonna be, we don't know what the cost is going to be, we don't know if we have developers that are actually gonna pay the flat fee. Is that correct?
Well, we've got their plans.
Yeah.
Okay, we have them.
They're getting drawn up in, in current code. You know, once they get those, then they're gonna, it's, it's potential builders, go around and start the pricing process.
Yes. This is just the beginning today, right now.
Yep, this is just a really high-level overview, all the stuff that we're talking about will come before you to be voted on when it comes to engaging with developers, signing contracts with them, paying them, um, having the agreement with the service provider, that'll all be done formally through the Board of Supervisors.
And if you're gonna work out these, you need details like rent-to-own, or maybe assistance, and things like that, it'll probably work out.
But we're not, we're not having a staff meeting. Well, I mean, this is just a high level.
Right, I did that.
On just, on what we're thinking about doing, and.
Thumbs up, is it a good idea? And go work out the details and bring it all in front of, in front of you guys, piece by piece.
It's more than just that, because we, I think there's, the, the, my question all along has been, do we want to own them?
Right.
And I really am not that excited about owning property, because I think it's an issue for us to own however many there is, and having, you know, s- I don't know, what, forty hopefully, at least? Or fifty homes, single-family homes scattered throughout Polk County, this is not just for Des Moines either, this is gonna be throughout Polk County. Um, is, is difficult for my.
Yeah. That is the big question mark, long-term. Um, you know, as it's presented now, we would be the owners. There's also a conver- the City of Des Moines is working on establishing a community land trust right now, they're in super early stages of it, um, but we've talked with them, and I'm part of, um, some of their advisory committees and their kind of staff-level, um, committees, but they understand that our goal is to transfer ownership of these homes to their community land trust at some point in the future. So that is like a long ways away, and by no means a done deal, but that's the intent and the thought, at least. and the thought, at least with our staff and the city's staff right now.
So for today, if you have questions or additional thoughts, talk to John or Sarah about it. And, you know, I think, I think it's Monday we talk to the Treasury, or Tuesday, I forget. It's coming up, because there's a lot of unanswered questions about the timing, how, because I know it's supposed to be obligated by now.
September, no, September twenty twenty-five is when it's obligated and spent, by December.
Yeah, but no, it's so weird, the timing of how you got to spend this money. And, you know, some people say, you know, why don't you just go out and build a, you know, forty-unit multifamily complex? Well, I don't think we can get that done in a year's time.
Right.
So, I don't know.
And I'll add, we have eight of the lots already in our possession, because it takes about six to twelve months once you start the tax sale process. We have eight in our possession already, so the proposal is to use those eight as kind of the test, like get these eight done, and then we know what the, you know, red flags are, we know what the sticking points are, so that when we do get through the process on the remaining properties will be, it'll be streamlined and ready to go. And also during that time, we'll be starting to work, once we get our service provider onboard, starting to work with families who are currently in shelter to get them moving towards the process. If you're going to be in a home, here's your responsibilities, here's how we can help you be successful.
Is there a role for, or what is the role for Polk County Health Trust Fund, or his role, what is it?
They've had a pretty minimal role so far. They don't have a funding, you know, they don't have any funding responsibility or any programming responsibility, but they've, you know, been weighing in on the overall concept and just kind of the overall impact of it. I mean, we've had a lot of meetings where it's like, is this really a good idea? Is this too much work for what it's worth? And everyone, everyone kind of said, yep, it's a lot of work, but we feel like it's going to have the biggest impact on families and on neighborhoods.
A couple of my thoughts would be, you know, one of the, one of the things that they identified when they did the survey of available housing was this shortage of family shelter housing. And, you know, the, the idea of single-family homes, again, I, I worry a little bit like you about managing a diverse portfolio across the, across the county. We already have had experience with that, with Polk, Polk County Health Services. And, and one of the things I do wonder about, and I, you know, I, on Homeless Coordinating Council, we talked about maybe doing some adaptive reuse projects for rapid rehousing, if we could get like existing apartment buildings and retrofit those so that they are, are better. I understand this is more of a family approach, and this is to try to meet the needs of the families, but, you know, I, I think it's, I think whatever we do, we, we know we need to build inventory of housing.
Right.
Whether we have to manage it or not is, I, I, you know, I think is beyond this discussion, but, and, and what that looks like. But I guess from, you know, from my perspective, I'd like to at least explore the adaptive reuse of existing apartment buildings that would meet the needs of families. Are they out there? Can we buy them? How fast could we, you know, adapt them for family use? And, you know, having a single point for management makes a lot more sense to me, or contracting with a management company for this. But all the wraparound services that, that need to go from how to find a job to how to, you know, get your kids enrolled in school and, and everything else, it's, it's a lot. And so having a concentration where you can more easily manage it seems to, you know, seems to be a preferred deal. And I understand, and there's, you know, none in my backyard discussions that you have to go through and, and everything else, but it's, it's a challenge, but I, I think it's a great opportunity as well, so.
I think, Tom, you looked at a couple sites.
Eight, eight housing units each.
Yeah, so, I think there's an opportunity for us to, you know, redo a couple spots. I like the idea of a few scattered sites, for sure. So I guess we'll just explore and, you know.
I'm not a problem in exploring it. I didn't, I don't want to go to a glorified shelter though, and, because that's what we want to get away from. I like to see these folks have the, have some skin in the game and own something. Future forwards, I think they take, they, they'll take better care of it, but if you just give it to them for free, and those kind of, I don't think anybody's talking about it anyway, but hopefully they're not. But if we want to explore stuff like that, I think it makes some sense. I like the centralized portion of it and the wraparound services, that makes sense to me, and the, the direction towards families makes a lot of sense, too. That's really where the, where the change could be made in some people's lives, that with the families that are homeless and, and struggling like that.
Well, the last count, I think we had seventy or so families homeless.
Sixty-six was the last list that I looked at, and a lot of them are single moms. They do, about half of them have an income of about two thousand dollars a month. There's another large portion of them that aren't, aren't signed up for benefits that they qual- are qualified for, so that'll be part of the process as well.
Yeah. Okay, well, stay tuned, we've got a lot to work on.
Yeah.
You got anything to say over there?
No, I think you touched on the main one, just concerned about long-term ownership of houses.
Yeah, that's the biggest challenge.
We have to have a transition now, especially you don't want to be, the sooner we can get these, you know, families successful on their feet, able to purchase these homes, but that's the way we want to go. We want to get them on the taxpayer rolls as opposed to being county-owned properties as well. There's just a lot, a lot. And then, and then that's, hopefully Treasury can ask those questions, what happens when someone gets economically stable? And how can we transfer?
Yeah.
Transfer ownership and then where's the, the revenue from that, those payments? Does that go into a fund that keeps this going, or? So just a lot to think through going forward.
Well, I know Sarah's put a lot, and team has put a lot of time in it, so we're continuing to work on it, so stay tuned.
We'll do it.
All right. Gracias. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Now I get to sign some papers for Eric, and then I'll be here for life. I'm orange? Oh, I like orange. Is blue okay? Or you want blue?